All right, I'd like to call this evening to hear the North City Council June 5th, 2017, to order office of law.
Mr. Mangus. Mr. Marmee.
Present.
Mr. Raff.
Here.
Mr. Blake.
Here.
Mr. Bub.
Here.
Mr. Cos.
Here.
Mrs. Floyd.
Here.
Mr. Frazier.
Here.
Ms. Hall.
Here.
And Mr. Johnson.
Here.
We've got nine present that were here this evening. Next on the agenda is an invitation by Mrs. Floyd, called by the political agents. We'll be back.
Would you bow your heads, please? Almighty God, we thank you for the many rights and freedoms that we have in this country. As we go about the summer months, we ask that you be with the students who are out and about in our community and ask that you be with us as we are aware of the fact that they are in places where they usually aren't, so we're more protected of them. In this very violent world we live in, we ask that you help us work to find peace in the world and end all the dissension that exists throughout the world. We ask that you be with us tonight during our deliberations and give us guidance and help us to make decisions that best affect the citizens of Newark. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Please join me in a pledge.
The blessings to the flag of the United States of America. Thanks to the republic for which it stands, one nation under our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mrs. Floyd. Next on the agenda, we have caucus. That's the time for council to discuss anything pertaining to the agenda tonight. Do you have it? Mrs. Floyd.
Motion to be excused, Mr. Mangus.
Second. Motion by Mrs. Floyd, second by Mr. Marmee, to excuse Mr. Mangus. All in favor, see if you can say aye. Aye. That passes. Thank you. I do have a couple other caucus items this evening. I've asked Mrs. Loomis to come and give us the charter review summary. So if you might just have, I could do that now. I appreciate it.
Good evening. Do I need to give my name and address like normal? Rhonda Loomis, 870 West Church Street. First of all, I speak on behalf of the entire Charter Review Commission. We wanted to thank Mr. or President Ellington for appointing us. It was an interesting couple of months of discussion, and he asked that I come up here and kind of give you a summary of what was discussed and some things that we wanted you to think about. We had seven items. Three were from the administration and, excuse me, four were from the commission. And I'm going to save the hot topic for last, which is what we did when we voted. The first from the administration was concerning Charter 9.01, Cabinet members appointed by the mayor not required to live in the city of Newark in order to serve. And currently, it goes by the ORC 735.01. During our discussion, Detective Baum, which is now Safety Director Baum, was here as well. And he was one of the folks that was appointed by the mayor, and council was able to waive the requirement to live in the city. And after discussion, we decided that since council can waive the rule, the administration can still consider candidates outside of the city. And we liked the fact that it kind of encouraged candidates to at least consider relocating to our great city of Newark. So we did not pass that on. The next two had come from clerk of council, and it was Section 4.15A and B, and it had to do with the publication of ordinances and resolutions in the newspaper. And we had a whole lot of discussion about that. And at this time, we feel like there's still a large population in Newark that prefers to read the information in the Newark Advocate, and that that same population might struggle to navigate through the city's website. Also, we had the privilege of having the law director there to keep us kind of legal and within the boundaries of what we could do or not do. And some of his input was if somebody decided that they did not read or see something, you know, wanted to sue the city or whatever, that we could say we've done it this way for a very long time. So what we wanted the administration to do is, prior to the next charter review, maybe streamline the website so it's super easy to find and, you know, big banners and it's there's no question that it was properly advertised or published. And the next one was Section 4.12, and it was the zoning ordinance. And this one kind of broke our hearts because we wanted to clean up the language through the charter at this time versus the other way right now. There are two different rules that Autumn was looking at. And currently, it says that 15 days after council has referred an application is when the public hearing would be conducted, and we wanted to change it to seven. But because this would have been the only thing that would have been on the charter to go before the voters, we just didn't feel like it was a big enough item. It's something that can be cleaned up in-house. You can change internal policies. And so we just didn't want the city to expend money to make a change to something that could be changed in-house. So that's going to stand as is. Article 11, which is appointments of the various boards and commissions, this was brought up by Mr. Crawford, and Mr. Blake was in the audience that night. They, the thought was, you all should have a little bio or a little something to go on before you just go. If the mayor says, I want to appoint Rhonda Loomis too, you would rather have a bio, something to go by first, and/or pass each person to a board or JEDZI or whatever it is by individual resolution. And so we had a whole lot of discussion on that, and what we decided was that may be something for your council rules committee. Mr. Mangus was in the audience a couple of times, and he did say that he would be more than willing to take that up. Something that you all could discuss amongst yourselves instead of it being a charter change, the rules committee could look at it, and if you feel like you need more information before a commission, a board, et cetera, person is appointed, then you guys can hash that out yourselves, and it wouldn't be in front of the voters. There was another article, 14, it had to do with initiatives. The conversation again came up with Mr. Crawford, that a citizen such as myself could come forward on a big-ticket item like the BSL when you all were dealing with that. And instead of you all having to make that decision, oh gosh, the terminology, I wanted to copy what he said, but I didn't write it down. Anyway, you could put an initiative on the ballot on behalf of the citizens. So for the BSL, you could have put that on the ballot on behalf of the citizens instead of making that decision. If I only think of that term. Anyway, let it go. So the law director did say that that whole conversation was not permissible per constitutional provisions. So that, actually, we just dropped it, but it was an interesting conversation to have. And the final one was brought up by the commission before I get to the big-ticket item was by me, because I didn't realize that once the charter changes have been passed by the commission, you all have to vote. And it says shall, go to the Board of Elections, not may. So you would really, I was worried, like, what if you had a crazy rogue commission and whatever it was that was in the charter, you would have to pass on to the Board of Elections. But we feel confident, after being part of this commission, that future charter review commissions will be as conscientious as what we had been, and will do what's right for the city. And voters have the final say in regards to city charter changes. So that didn't fly. And then finally was 13.01, and it was a large discussion on partisan versus nonpartisan elections. This comes up every single charter review, every single time. And so we voted on it last because we thought, for starters, if it was going to pass, it would be the only thing that was on the charter, and it would be easier for citizens to understand. It would have plenty of time to be explained to citizens, you know, that there was a change in how elections were going to run. So we ended up voting no to put it through to the voters in November, but we feel that it deserves more time than this commission and all other commissions have been assigned. And the charter allows for an in-depth study, and we think that it should be presented to the voters as a standalone proposed change through the appointment by city council of a charter review study group, which is in your charter, followed by discretionary charter review commission. We strongly urge that that's what happens. If you want to see what the voters really think about a partisan versus nonpartisan, then make that a standalone, separate study group and a standalone discretionary charter review commission meeting, because there's just not enough time. It's too big a decision. Nobody was comfortable with it, and it was voted down four to one. Mr. Crawford actually voted yes. So your commission was myself, Mr. Harry Yokum, Mr. Daniel Crawford, Mr. Chase Galoney, and Ms. Jill Goddard. And again, we just want to thank President Ellington for giving us the opportunity to serve. It was very interesting. We all learned something, and at this time, we passed nothing on to go to the Board of Elections.
Thank you, Mrs. Floyd. I certainly appreciate you chairing the charter review, so thank you. One other thing I have, caucus, our first meeting in July, July 3rd, which is also the same night they're doing the fireworks day, OSU, and I'm just wondering if everybody's okay if we move it to July 5th? Does that satisfy everybody? I don't think probably too much, I come here at 7:00 on the 3rd. Okay, we'll work on it. Go with that after the fireworks. Boy, you could do that if you want. We wouldn't have to have fireworks here. Okay. Now we go to the minutes of, well, I guess, are there any questions for Mrs. Loomis? I should have asked that before I let her sit down. Basically, she did a really good job in the charter review commission audit, and nothing's going to the ballot, Mr. Marmee.
I guess I just have one question. When it said that, when you're stating that it would have to be a standalone item for voters to vote on, if it changes to bipartisan, or if it changes that, doesn't that change our entire charter?
Yes.
There would be numerous changes then.
Yes, it would be, it would be a ripple effect throughout the entire charter.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, we move on to the minutes of the May 15th, 2017 meeting. Is your motion approved? Motion by Mr. Raff. Second by Mr. Johnson. All in favor, sign the file by saying aye.
Aye.
Or same sign. That passes. Thank you. We have reports from standing committees this evening. We have one from finance and one from safety. Without objection, those will be received and filed. We have one for economic development and one for personnel that's on its way, so we will approve those that are next. And a report from city officials, we have one from Barb Jones, our city tax administrator, the income tax revenue reports for the period ending May 15th, 2017. Without objection, that will be received and filed. Next on the agenda tonight, we have comments from citizens. There are two places for citizens' comments. One is now before the legislation and one is afterwards. Basically, this is not a debate with council. This is just your opportunity to be heard. Is there anyone who would like to speak at this first section? Put your hand up. Ma'am, anyone else would like to speak? Okay, so we have two or three. Ma'am, you want it?
I'll go first. Jen Carnegie, 2584 Upland View Court. I would just like to speak against the moratorium that will be voted on tonight. There was an interesting article today in The Dispatch where Johnstown is currently out of plots to allow people to come in and have cultivating permits. And I wanted to speak out about the rules, because that seemed to be a big issue last week during the committee meetings. Some of the opposition just felt like there were not enough rules. So I looked over the 24-page application for the cultivating rules, and page 11 is one G notice of proper zoning form. So this has to be filed with the fees and all of the information that they require, which is a lot. And there are four boxes here, and one of the boxes is the area of Newark has no local moratorium on medical marijuana facilities in place at this time. So it's my understanding that if y'all vote for a moratorium tonight and they have to check this box, that Newark is ineligible to receive any cultivating or processing So I also did a little bit more research on our police and fire, and I was told that we were at 1970s manpower for our police. Our average cars have 80,000 miles. Some of the floorboards have sheet metal patches. Our fire and EMS are spread thin. I know we're refurbishing a truck because we can't afford new. So I just feel at this time, when we have this opportunity to create legislation, to allow zoning to come in here, to get the business tax and to get the payroll taxes, voting for a moratorium would not be a plus for the city right now. So that's all.
Thank you. Mr. Crawford?
Daniel Crawford, 163 South Second Street. I'll be quick, because I'm going to talk later after legislation about the whole nonpartisan issue. But right now, as I spoke about last week when I came before the committee, I stand in opposition to Ordinance 17-22. Right now, largely, I mentioned last week why a lot of my opposition was regarding, you know, I think the, I think ill-guided concept behind this whole moratorium. But I also do not like the emergency declaration in this. I don't believe that is appropriate for this. I don't personally see what the emergency is. I also don't believe it is fair for the citizens of Newark who voted, you know, by a majority, you know, to dispense with the previous laws regarding medical, not medical, but marijuana decriminalization. And although that was largely related seemingly to recreational marijuana, there is overwhelming support throughout the country for medical marijuana. And if the community voted in favor of decriminalizing marijuana, I believe this action itself would also be in contradiction to the people's will, at least when it comes to medical marijuana. And I understand, as I said last week, the hesitance to support something without having all the rules clarified by the state. But an emergency declaration for this, you're going to be voting on it tonight, just six days after it was passed out of committee, that is not sufficient time for the people to weigh in, for us to do research and talk about just even the consequences of a moratorium. I know it's not intended to be a ban, but there could have consequences, as was outlined by Mrs. Carnegie, as to our access to these dispensaries if we don't want to ban them. And I'm just hoping that we, and even considering that Mr. Mangus isn't here, one of the things that was talked about last week was you wanted the whole council to weigh in, but without Mr. Mangus here, that can't even be a legitimate argument the whole council is weighing in. So I would just advise that the emergency clause be removed and that you at least, you know, wait another week, another two weeks for this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crawford. Ma'am? Mr. Mangus did have to take his daughter to New York, which has been a planned trip for a long time, I will say that. He's not here just because they want to vote.
My name's Alyssa Baker. Do you know my address? Alyssa Baker, 60 Leaves Drive, Hebron. As this being my first time to have the opportunity to address local council, I just want to take a moment to touch upon the related subject of the decriminalization ordinance. I want to apologize to the council and to the citizens of the city for not having attended and addressed council prior to, during, and after the campaign. It was kind of a timing issue. As co-founder of the Sensible Newark Initiative, I believe now in hindsight that if we had been here to educate and discuss it with you, it would have made a difference to how the initiative was viewed by the city administration and provide clarity to council on what we had hoped to achieve. I just want to clarify that the purpose of the intent of the decriminalization initiative was our response to House Bill 523, to offer protection to the patients of this community who rely on cannabis to treat their conditions, and also protection for those patients whose medical conditions were left out on the bill. It was our goal to offer a solution to the opiate crisis. However, we're here now, and we can only move forward from here. What we have now in front of us is a new opportunity to work together and offer a way for the patients in this area who do qualify, a way to safely and legally obtain their medication. When we spoke last week at the economic committee meeting, the overall consensus was that everyone seemed to be pro-medical marijuana use, so I'm not going to use my time today to try to convince you of all the benefits. Everyone stated that they are open to businesses such as cultivators and processors, but as I understand per the discussion, you're hesitant of retail locations due to the lack of information from the state, concerns with federal laws and policy, fear of creating additional strain on limited local resources and zoning concerns. It's understandable that the overall priority is the safety and protection of citizens and existing businesses. How can I help you in those concerns? I have help available to you, the form and local and out-of-state resources that I can make available, which can serve as guidance on how to shape local regulations that would be both welcoming for dispensaries while also being able to remit some control over how retail businesses will operate in the city. We are willing to pay additional fees suggested by Mr. Hall that would go directly to the city in the form of a local tax or operation fee, so long as these fees are not exorbitant to the point that we cannot remain operational. It will hinder growth and the ability to offer additional wellness services to the patients as we move forward. Johnstown, as was mentioned, serves as a good example in their willingness to cooperate with the businesses seeking licensure in their village, as they reduce to propose 6% tax down to 1%, understanding that the cost will ultimately be reflected onto the patients who already will be paying out of pocket for their medications, as insurance will not be covering it. These fees are understandable, especially in regards to the need of additional funds for local law enforcement who already operate on a strained budget. We want to help keep the community safe by offering to pay these fees, but not to the point of extortion. I have an answer for Mr. Raff's question last week and a form of some information I printed that I can leave for you on the financial concerns. A moratorium on dispensaries set for any amount of time will, in fact, deter us from applying here in the city, as we have to have proper zoning in order to lease or purchase space, and that the rules will be similar to the cultivation applications. Approval of these locations will likely be required from the members of your council. I also want to weigh in on what Daniel said, with the lack of time, the citizens have had to weigh in on this, especially patients who have been able to travel here tonight. I want to address the emergency clause, and we talked last week about being proactive and not reactive. I feel like an emergency clause is a reaction, and how can we be more proactive? So this might be a little out of line to ask this, but I feel like we could, in lieu of an emergency moratorium, that we could enact a citizen advisory panel that can begin working together with resources that can be made available with other members of the community, for example, local veterans, patients, healthcare providers, law enforcement, patient advocates, and current and potential business owners. If we work together now to do what we can to develop regulations that will benefit the city and the business's ability to serve the patients, let's allow compassion for the sick to steer us in the right direction. By doing so, Newark will be slated to be pioneers in the city that understands and wants and needs of the patients of the community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sir, is there anyone else's first section? Yes, sir.
Jerry McCoy, 427 Eddie Street, Newark, Ohio. I'm here to speak against the moratorium against dispensaries, and I am here to give my personal account with medical marijuana. I am a veteran of the United States Army. Eight years, nine months, and 10 days, I fought in combat in Iraq. I have been injured overseas, and I was injured again while serving at Fort Bragg. I broke every vertebrae in my thoracic and lumbar spine, which left me in a wheelchair, essentially. So I was in a wheelchair for a while, and through pain medication and pain treatment, I got back on my feet. But I was left with the end result of a pain medication addiction. I was addicted to opiates at this point. For several years, they continued to give me opiate medications from big pharmacies, and for years, I continued to struggle with this problem, until I had some advice from some friends to travel and check out the medical marijuana dispensaries out west and in Michigan. Since going and trying that, I have found out that not only has it helped me relieve pain, but it has completely freed me of my addiction to opiates. Completely freed me. I am on all-natural medicines now. It has also helped me by ingesting medical marijuana. When it comes to nighttime, I have been in combat. I have issues with PTSD, and I have suffered from night terrors for a long time. Medical marijuana benefits me in the fact that I can go to sleep and not have to worry about that happening, and not have to worry about doing something in my sleep to my significant other. And I think it's very important that veterans get the ability to seek this treatment, because it has personally helped me and has personally helped other veterans with the same scenario. That's basically all I have to say about that. I have a couple statistics in here that I wanted to share with you guys from nationally-recognized sources. The Senate in Colorado passed a bill for marijuana for PTSD, which was called Senate Bill 17. This allowed doctors to recommend medical marijuana for post-traumatic stress disorder and acute stress disorders. It easily cleared the Senate with a 34 to 1 vote. They also claimed that THC is effective for symptoms such as anxiety, nightmares, and sleep disorders. They also note veterans could be at risk of losing their benefits if they use recreational marijuana, which is a major problem. Another study from Ann Arbor and the University of Michigan, patients using medical marijuana to control chronic pain reported a 64% reduction in their use of more traditional prescription pain medications known as opioids. The 185 patients in Ann Arbor also reported fewer side effects from their medications and a 45% improvement in the quality of life since using cannabis to manage pain. Medical marijuana may be an alternative to more common prescription painkillers at a time when national health leaders are asking the medical community to cut back on prescription drugs like Vicodin and OxyContin. The highlights of the study were cannabis use was associated with 64% lower opiate use in patients with chronic pain. Cannabis use was associated with a better quality of life in patients with chronic pain, and cannabis use was associated with fewer medication side effects in medications used. My next stat is from Colorado Marijuana Tax Collections. September 1st, 2015 to February 29th, 2016, Colorado collected 64 million in retail marijuana tax revenue, up to 64% from a period a year earlier. That's a lot of money that could help our town with the money we spend to make our town nice. The last one is the most important one, I think. This is from the National Institute of Health. Dr. Powell and his co-investigators compared rates of opioid-related treatment admissions and mortality rates in states without legal marijuana devices, using data from the annually compiled Teds, which is the Treatment Episodes data set, and the National Vital Statistics System respectively. Their analysis revealed that states with legal marijuana had lower opioid overdose mortality rates and fewer admissions to treatment for opioid addiction than they would have had without the dispensaries. Best estimated sizes of the reductions were 16 to 31% in mortality due to prescription opioid overdoses, and 25 to 35% admissions for treatment in opioid addiction. The researchers also noted a trend whereby where legal marijuana laws are in place, there were more incidence of opioid-related problems declining. We all know, we live in this town, there's a problem with opioid medication, and it's a problem nationally. This is a problem I've struggled through, and I know my fellow veterans. I have another fellow veteran with me, and this is something that can really help. And I really hope you guys reconsider it, you know? Your freedom fighters are searching for this medication. So I just ask that you think about that when you make your decision, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing your story, and thank you for your service.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, now we're going to move on to ordinances on the second reading, 17-21.
Ordinance 17-21 by Mr. Raff, Mr. Marmee, Mr. Cos, Mr. Johnson, Mrs. Floyd, and ordinance amending Chapter 1054, Section 1054.16 of the Codified Ordnances of the City of Newark, Ohio regarding the Stormwater Management Code.
We've heard the second reading of 17-21. What is your wish?
Mr. President.
Mr. Raff.
I'd like a bigger motion to adopt 17-21.
Motion by Mr. Raff, second by Mr. Bub. Is there any discussion on 17-21? Seeing none, all, please call and roll vote.
Mr. Mangus. Mr. Marmee.
Yes.
Mr. Raff.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Bub.
Here.
Or yes. Mr. Cos.
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd.
Yes.
Mr. Frazier.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
And Mr. Johnson.
Yes. We have eight yeses in one here, so that goes fast. Next, we're going to ordinances on the first reading, 17-22.
Ordinance 17-22 by Mr. Cos and Mrs. Floyd, and ordinance authorizing a moratorium. Ordinance 17 dash 22 by Mr. Cost and Mrs. Floyd, and ordinance authorizing a moratorium on the processing or approval of any application for certification of zoning clearance, building occupant's permit, or any other permit or approval required of the zoning code for any premises that would enable the retail sale or dispensing of medical marijuana for a period of 180 days and declaring an emergency.
17 dash 22 is on its first reading, but it is an emergency, so what is your wish?
Mr. President.
Mr. Cost.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt 17 dash 22.
Motion by Mr. Cost.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Floyd. Is there any discussion on 17 dash 22?
Mr. President.
Mr. Cost.
After last week's discussion concerning what qualifies and does not qualify as emergency legislation, I'm not sure that I can justify the emergency clause. When this legislation was written, the thought was that we would like to, as quickly as possible, make sure that we didn't have all these inquiries coming in right now before we were prepared to deal with them. But after the discussions, I've realized that part of this group isn't for this whatsoever, let alone the emergency part. So, I don't feel I can justify the emergency part, and as Mr. Cost prefers, well, I would like the opportunity to have this vote be when everyone's here. So, what I would like to do would be to make a motion to amend and remove the emergency clause from this piece of legislation.
There's a motion by Mr. Cost to amend 17 dash 22, taking off the emergency clause. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Floyd.
Order of order.
Mr. Marmy.
Once the emergency clause has been presented and it's been read for the first time, an emergency must be voted on upon that meeting, and removing the emergency clause that came to the floor as an emergency, it must be voted on.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan, Mr. Sassen. Is that correct?
I disagree. Any piece of legislation to be amended, and you can amend or remove the emergency clause. If the motion to amend is passed, it becomes an ordinary piece of legislation. The original motion to adopt would essentially become moot, and the legislation would be scheduled for a second hearing at the next meeting of the council.
Just for a little clarification for the audience, a piece of legislation that emergency clause, it takes seven votes to pass. So, if it doesn't get seven votes, it's not an emergency. It'll only get, it takes six votes to pass, period. So, if it would get six votes, it would pass, but not as an emergency. So, what Mr. Cost is asking us to do is to remove the emergency clause, which means it would have to be held for a second reading for two weeks. Is that right, Mr. Sassen?
Correct.
Okay. Is there any other discussion on the amendment?
I still question the chair. Robert's rules of order, and our rule states that it's an emergency, and if you amend this, it's still on the table. The only thing that could change it would be a motion to table it.
Where, do you think that is in our rules?
An emergency clause must be voted upon. I mean, if it comes to the table as an emergency, it is on our agenda for tonight, and it was read as an emergency, and an emergency is voted upon at first reading.
It's Rule 10, Mr. President.
And council rules?
Yes.
What's that say, Mr. Blake? Oh, never mind. Hang on. Rule 10. Pardon us for a moment. Rule 10. Well, yeah, I see your point, Mr. Marmy. It does kind of sound like that. It is moved that an emergency clause be added to a particular piece of legislation. Standing committee considering legislation shall determine by a majority vote of the committee members, or does each present whether legislation should be presented as an emergency legislation. So, it has been presented as an emergency legislation.
And.
This is in the committee, we should step forward on that. But, Mr. Sassen, you're saying you can amend that?
Where does it say in there that it can't be amended to remove the emergency clause?
Does not say it can't be amended.
It does say.
But it does say.
A motion to amend can be made on any portion of a piece of legislation, including removing the emergency.
It's an emergency, okay.
Why didn't we do it previously the other way? It happened, it was probably seven or eight years ago, we were not allowed to remove the emergency clause.
I don't recall that.
I don't believe you were here at that point. It may have been even longer than that.
We've been here for 12 years, I said.
Well, I don't happen to recall that either, but that doesn't mean it didn't happen.
I'm not saying that a piece of legislation cannot be amended. The thing is, is it was presented as an emergency, and it came to the table to be voted on tonight. A motion in the second is on the table. So, you either vote on it, or it dies. It's on the table. Without the emergency clause on it, we wouldn't have had a motion for a second.
Without the emergency clause, it wouldn't be on the agenda this evening.
It'd be on the agenda.
Well, it would be on the agenda for a second reading. Right, we wouldn't be discussing it tonight. Mr. Cost.
So, I know that it's come as an emergency, but I was under the impression that, as Mr. Sassen said, that any piece of legislation can be amended. And I'm just asking for an amendment to remove the emergency clause. I don't think it's necessary to be there. I'm also looking for the courtesy of having full council here to vote on something that I think is incredibly important. Thank you.
So, if you're asking to remove the emergency clause, and you don't get six votes for this amendment, then we'll be voting on it as an emergency as it is written. Correct?
That's correct.
Okay. We're going to go that way. Any other discussion on the amendment?
Mr. President.
Mr. Frazier.
I do not approve of amending this and removing the emergency clause. We've talked about this for about a month now. We've had plenty of time to research this, and everybody is aware that this vote is occurring today. It's unfortunate that Mr. Mangus cannot be here. That being said, this will continue to extend the time that will take for us to vote on this by two weeks, and I believe that for the businesses that want to do business here, it's important that they receive the clarity on moratorium, and also for the people seeking treatment, I think by extending it will be doing them the best service.
Any other discussion on the amendment? Mr. Raff, do you have your hand up?
No, sir. I was just rubbing my eyes. Sorry about my eyes.
Anyone else? I'll now please call the roll vote on the amendment of removing the emergency clause on legislation 17 dash 22.
Mr. Mangus. Mr. Marmy.
No.
Mr. Raff.
No.
Mr. Blake.
No.
Mr. Bub.
Yes.
Mr. Cost.
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd.
Yes.
Mr. Frazier.
No.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
And Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
The tally is five to four. That does not pass, it is not amended, so 17 dash 22 stays as read. Is there any discussion on 17 dash 22 now, not amended?
Mr. President.
Mrs. Floyd.
I just wanted to mention that, the discussion previously, I too read the article about Johnstown today, and it was mentioned that growing facilities and processing plants, and this piece of legislation deals only with the dispensing of medical marijuana. It uses the word "processing" there, but it's dealing with processing of an application for a certificate of zoning clearance, so deals with zoning, not with the processing plant. That's I'm in favor of the legislation.
Thank you, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Frazier.
Yeah, I don't know if you guys know how we're going to vote on this or not, but so...
Not sure.
We've been discussing this a lot. So, one of the things that I did for council was I went to medicalmarijuana.ohio.gov, the state's site, for transparency for this transition. I sent it over to the clerk in order to print the 68 preliminary rules, 68 pages of preliminary rules associated with dispensaries, and that should be in your mailboxes for you guys to review as well. When it comes to dispensaries in Newark, Ohio, it's very clear. By removing the ability to have dispensaries here through a temporary moratorium, that could likely impact the application process, or by not even addressing the zoning concerns and not even setting the criteria for people to do business here, we're going to limit access to healthcare. And so, individuals with PTSD, with ALS, with childhood MLX, they are the ones that are seeking this treatment, and to tell people with serious conditions that they have to travel outside of our city despite residing here is not fair to them. Secondly, it's discouraging business throughout all aspects of this new industry. We're discouraging a new industry from doing business here, and that's something that I do not want to do, and I don't recommend. We see the issues that are facing our community with addiction and recovery and incarceration, and anything we can do to have a positive impact with that is a positive thing. So, I hope that this council will set the tone for our state, for our community, in order to encourage businesses to come here, and to set the force of action in place to set the framework for individuals to do business in our community. And I hope that these members of council, in their wisdom, will vote no on this, and will recognize that we should encourage businesses being, let alone businesses, that can have a direct impact on 20 serious illnesses for individuals that have been lacking medical treatment up to this point. I have talked to a doctor about the three tenths of doctors not recommending this medical treatment, and they pointed to FDA studies that have been prohibited by the federal government as a lack of evidence for medical treatment. So, with that being said, I encourage our medical community, our colleges, to research this, to do the peer-reviewed studies, and the 90 peer-reviewed studies that I found, 67% of them were for it, and so only 8% were against it. And so, I encourage everybody to do research, I encourage everybody to read over the rules so that we can draw the correct framework in order for people to do business with that.
Thank you, Mr. Frazier. Anyone else? Anyone else that hasn't spoken? Mr. Blake?
Mr. President, I just wanted, I think since I've sat on council, it's council-supported legislation, reference to the breed-specific legislation where we were not, no longer targeting specific animals, and then this legislation, well, then we did the GLBT legislation, and then this legislation tonight, I feel as though, you know, we've made strides in being open to our community. I mean, our community is full of 60,000 individuals that have their own decisions, and we, as a council, should make decisions as to limiting access or economic development in our city. And so, I find myself in rare agreement with Mr. Frazier on several points, so... So, I don't know how often this is going to happen, but it is. So, I just wanted to say, you know, kudos to the work that you did in the Economic Development Committee, and then your comments tonight, and so I publicly do thank you. So, with that, I'll pass.
Thank you, Mr. Blake, Mr. Cost.
Well, once again, I'd like to say, I am not trying to discourage business in the city of Newark, not whatsoever. I am not, I'm not looking at these guidelines in terms of the study growth or the processing. My concern is on the dispensary, when it is a retail sale that reaches out to the public. I am not against medical marijuana, and it's huge. I have absolutely no doubt that it can benefit people. I want to thank you for coming and telling your stories. My concern is that we have some guidelines and some parameters from the state that we can use to do things properly for the city. This is not about trying to discourage business whatsoever. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Cost. Anyone else before we vote?
Mr. President.
Mr. Bub.
Would you mind if I asked the mayor and/or the administration a question regarding timeframe?
What's your question?
Just for the record and here, you know, because you can always amend a moratorium six months, whatever, because the administration has to enforce this, has to set up the zoning, what they're comfortable with on the timeframe.
Mayor.
Well, I just, we're just talking about dispensing, and the rules aren't completed on dispensing, so I guess when that application would be complete is when we're looking at. Those rules are supposed to be decided on by September 8th of this year, within a goal of having dispensing by next year September. Now, it could be sooner. I mean, that was a deadline goal when the House Representatives or the Plumas went over and passed a two-year limitation. I spoke with House Reps and Senators today locally, and they said that's the process here, it's working itself out, there's discussion, they want to get it right, they don't want just the government to make the rules so that it makes sense, they want the private sector, so that's what it's going through right now. Yes, it's done on the cultivation side, those applications will be submitted, the processing is the next thing to complete, and then finally the dispensing, because that'd be the last piece of it. So, as I'm saying, September 8th rules is probably going to be a couple of months after that before they have the applications out, just because the highest department of commerce usually deals with that, they have to go over there and take care of that, so that's a timeframe you all can talk about, but I'm just saying that's a, I can't see anything happening anyways till the fall, but it'd probably be next year for the dispensing anyways.
Thank you. You know, and that's why I just wanted, you know, that input from the folks that are here tonight that weren't at the last committee meeting, you know, I'm not opposed to medical marijuana dispensing, but I also want to say to get it right, you know, therefore I'm going to support this moratorium this evening, so thank you.
Anyone else?
Mr. President.
Anyone else that hasn't spoken?
Mr. Frazier. The hypocrisy of the situation is not lost on me, we're processing rules have not been established, and yet we are not seeking a moratorium for that. The hypocrisy behind the fact that we don't feel comfortable with this direction, but we're not treating all marijuana businesses the same, is not lost on me as well. And so, if we want to set up a framework for people to do businesses, we should do it holistically. We should not just pick and choose which industries we want to encourage and what industries we want to discourage. If we want an industry to be here, we should treat it equally. And so, I recommend, again, for individuals on this council to not send the wrong message to the business community, to those potentials investors in state and out-of-state that want to do business with us. And so, once again, I understand that the rules are there, we can set our rules, we can set our framework before the state comes in line, and we can get it right, so that way we don't have any surprises. We can leverage the existing guidelines that they have in order to set a concrete foundation, and once again, we can be proactive instead of reactive. With that, I'll pass.
Thank you, Mr. Frazier. Once again, 17 dash 22 is an emergency, it will take seven votes to pass as an emergency, it may get six votes, it passes as regular legislation. I'll now please call the roll vote.
Mr. Mangus. Mr. Marmy.
No.
Mr. Raff.
No.
Mr. Blake.
No.
Mr. Bub.
Yes.
Mr. Cost.
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd.
Yes.
Mr. Frazier.
No.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
We have four yes, five no, 17 dash 22 does not pass. Next on the first reading, we go on to 17 dash 23.
Ordinance 17 dash 23 by Mr. Cost and Mrs. Floyd, and ordinance setting compensation and stating policy with respect to the police and fire chiefs and deputy chiefs of the city of Newark, Ohio, repealing all ordinances and resolutions in conflict with this ordinance and declaring an emergency.
You've heard the first reading of 17 dash 23, but it is an emergency. What is your wish?
Mr. President.
Mr. Bub.
Excuse me, I have moved to the adopt order, 17 dash 23.
Moved to adopt by Mr. Bub, second by Mrs. Floyd. Is there any discussion on 17 dash 23?
Mr. President.
Mr. Frazier. I have some serious concerns when it comes to putting in compensation for an extended period of time without having the necessary revenue in place in order to support that. What we have seen is mandatory raises of 1.75%, 1.75%, 1.5% over the next three years through our binding union contracts. With that being said, we are looking for a similar increase on non-union employees. What we are seeing in our tax collection is a decrease of $100,000 to projected values. What we're seeing is increased expenses through healthcare and other aspects of running our administrative government. We already have 88% of our budget in the general fund dedicated to wages and compensation, and I view that continuing to set the tone of increased spending by our government will likely impact our capital improvements, our debt situation, and our continued operations, and the ability for us to actually... and the ability for us to actually service our government and our citizens. And so, I don't see how we can continue to pass pay increases. I know we want to compensate our people that do a wonderful job, but until we get our revenue streams and our budget in mind, we really have to draw a line somewhere that says we can no longer afford to give pay increases, and we have to find new ways in order to support our government. That will pass.
Thank you, Mr. Frazier. Anyone else? Mr. Floyd and Mr. Marmy.
I just want to say, you know, we know that most of the workers in the city of Newark don't get these raises, and to deny them to the next four groups that we're talking about, I don't think we can. I just, I know the budget's going to be tight. We hope things will improve as time goes on, but I will support this legislation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Marmy.
Thank you, Mr. President. The, this particular piece of legislation, as well as the next three, I'm going to kind of state my opinions on them collectively. I don't believe in paying for something that we don't know how we're going to pay for. I don't believe it's this body's fiscal responsibility, or we're not being fiscally responsible if we do that. I was told by the administration that, you know, if we don't do this, then just more people will join the unions. Well, last time I checked, I don't believe our police and fire chiefs are authorized to form or join the union, and we're doing that. The comment that other employees all get these raises and these entities do not, well, the elected and appointed officials haven't received raises, and it's okay because they're elected and appointed. Now, as you noticed in committees, I did vote for the hourly non-bargaining unit, because hourly employees, I do view that they should be treated equally and fair to the other hourly employees, but the supervisory management employees that are not a part of the union, what's the difference between them and elected and appointed officials? The other thing along the line of that is, I still don't believe that we should vote for this not having a plan in place on how we're going to afford it. You can't spend what you do not have. And we were told from the first bargaining that we couldn't afford the first one. And we had three, all the unions have gone through, and we, the raises are going to be there for all three of the unions. So, we couldn't afford the first ones standalone. We can't, definitely can't afford the others. We don't have a plan in place to afford those, let alone these that are being presented in front of us. I don't believe that we can push this through and make, you know, making sure that, you know, we, I don't think we have answers. I also asked on another one of the pieces of legislation, why a particular position was not listed on there. I never received an answer back on that. That was, it just went on wasted ears, I suppose, but I was told I was going to get an answer, and I never did. So, I don't necessarily agree with doing this, and particularly if we don't have a plan. Now, I am going to make a motion to table this legislation to a period not specified in which I want to, for this council, to be able to hear answers as far as how are we going to fund this. So my motion is to table ordinance 17-22.
Second.
The motion to table by Mr. Marmy is second by Mr. Frazier. The motion to table is not debated. Hon, please call the roll.
Mr. Mangus? Mr. Marmy?
Yes.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
No.
Mr. Cost?
No.
Mrs. Floyd?
No.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
No.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Five fours, my count, if you have.
Five fours. Five yeses.
The motion will not be tabled. Back to you, Mr. Marmy.
So it takes six to table. All emergencies.
Well, even if it's an emergency, it still takes six to table, no matter what.
Right. Okay. Well, I find that disheartening, because I really felt like, you know, similar to what Mr. Cost said, you know, if somebody wanted additional information additional times, I would have entertained even the motion to table what he had, but he never presented it, as I said. So, I just find it disheartening that that happened. So, very well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Marmy. Anyone else? Mr. Raff?
I am going to support these pieces of legislation, but I, we table legislation, that doesn't get the administration, it doesn't let them off the hook. We still need to know what's the plan. We still need to know what's going to happen. We still need to know how we're going to pay for this. And we still have plenty of opportunity in the future for somebody to come forward and tell us what that is. I know I for one am not real excited about robbing Peter to pay Paul, taking from one fund to the other, and have supported that in the past, having been told that that won't happen again, and will support that in the future.
Thank you, Mr. Raff. Anyone else? Hon, please call the roll to vote.
Mr. Mangus? Mr. Marmy?
No.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Frazier?
No.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Seven yes, two no, so 17-23 passes as an emergency. Next, we go on to 17-24.
Ordinance 17-24 by Mr.
Mr. Marmy? 17-23 needs voted on, I believe.
That's the one we just voted on.
Oh, I'm sorry, 22. That's my fault.
You know, I always enjoy your point.
I saw so many.
I usually am wrong, so I will relish in the fact that I'm right on that. 17-24.
All right. Ordinance 17-24 by Mr. Cost and Mrs. Floyd. An ordinance setting compensation and stating policy with respect to management and supervisory personnel of the city of Norfolk, Ohio, repealing all ordinances and resolutions in conflict with this ordinance and declaring an emergency.
You've heard the first reading of 17-24. It is an emergency. What does your wish?
Mr. President?
Mr. Bob?
I'll move to adopt the 17-24.
Motion by Mr. Bub, second by Mrs. Floyd. Is there any discussion on 17-24?
Mr. President?
Mr. Frazier?
Once again, I want to point to the fact that we are having decreasing tax revenues. We are having increased expenses, and we're continuing to provide pay raises to various parts of our government. And there's got to be a point in which we draw the line and we say we cannot support additional increases to our employees regardless of how long they do, regardless on how the bargaining units are treated. And once again, I just want to voice my objection to the direction in which we're going.
Thank you, Mr. Frazier. Anyone else? Seeing none, hon, please call the roll to vote.
Mr. Mangus? Mr. Marmy?
No.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Frazier?
No.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
And Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
17-24 passes as an emergency, seven to two. Next, we go on to 17-25.
Ordinance 17-25 by Mr. Cost, Mrs. Floyd. An ordinance setting compensation and stating policy with respect to the hourly non-bargaining unit employees of the city of Norfolk, Ohio, repealing all ordinances and resolutions in conflict with the ordinance and declaring an emergency.
You've heard the first reading of 17-25. It is an emergency. What does your wish?
Mr. President?
Mr. Bob?
I'll move to adopt 17-25.
Motion by Mr. Bub, second by Mr. Cost. Any discussion on 17-25?
Mr. President?
Mr. Frazier?
I would again like to voice my objection to pay raises that are unsubstantiated and unfunded. That will pass.
Mr. Frazier, anyone else? Hon, please call the roll to vote.
Mr. Mangus? Mr. Marmy?
No.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Frazier?
No.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Seven to. Thank you. That will pass as an emergency. And finally, on the first reading, we have 17- well, I'm sorry, we have 17-26. I'm sorry.
Ordinance number 17-26 by Mr. Cost and Mrs. Floyd. Ordinance setting compensation and stating policy with respect to administrative technical executive leave of the city of Norfolk, Ohio, repealing all ordinances and resolutions in conflict with the ordinance and declaring an emergency.
You've heard the first reading of 17-26. It is an emergency. What does your wish?
Mr. President?
Mr. Bob?
I'll move to adopt 17-26.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Bub, second by Mr. Frazier. Is there any discussion on 17-26? Seeing none, hon, please call the roll to vote.
Mr. Mangus? Mr. Marmy?
No.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
And Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Eight one. Passes 17-26, passes eight to one. Next on the first reading, and finally, we have 17-27.
Ordinance 17-27 by Mr. Marmy, Mr. Cost, Mrs. Floyd. It's an ordinance to provide for the issuance of not-to-receive $91,000 of bond anticipation notes in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of paying the cost of fire engine improvements and all necessary pertinences thereto, and declaring an emergency.
17-27 is on the first reading, but it is an emergency. What does your wish?
Mr. President?
Mr. Marmy?
Make a motion to adopt ordinance 17-27.
Motion by Mr. Marmy, second by Mrs. Floyd. Is there any discussion on 17-27? Seeing none, hon, please call the roll to vote.
Mr. Mangus? Mr. Marmy?
Yes.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
17-27 passes nine zero. Next, we move on to resolutions on the second reading, 17-30.
Resolution 17-30 by Mr. Raff, Mr. Cost, Mrs. Floyd. A resolution authorizing and directing the director of public service of the city of Norfolk, Ohio, to apply for, accept, and enter into a water pollution control one fund agreement on behalf of the city of Norfolk for planning, design, and/or construction of water, wastewater facilities, and road digestion project, and designating a dedicated repayment source for the loan.
You've heard the second reading of 17-30. What does your wish?
Mr. President?
Mr. Raff?
Make a motion to adopt 17-30.
Motion by Mr. Raff, second by Mr. Frazier. Is there any discussion on 17-30? Seeing none, hon, please call the roll to vote.
Mr. Mangus? Mr. Marmy?
Yes.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
And Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
17-30 passes nine zero. Next, we go to 17-32 on the second reading.
Resolution 17-32 by Mr. Raff, Mr. Marmy, Mr. Cost, Mr. Johnson, Mrs. Floyd. A resolution authorizing the director of public service to enter into contract for the purchase of cer- of certain real property on behalf of the city of Norfolk pursuant to the Don Edwards Park.
You've heard the second reading of 17-32. What does your wish?
Mr. President?
Mr. Raff?
Make a motion to adopt 17-32.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Raff, second by Mr. Marmy. Is there any discussion on 17-32? Seeing none, hon, please call the roll to vote.
Mr. Mangus? Mr. Marmy?
Yes.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
And Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
17-32 passes nine zero. Next, on the second reading, 17-35.
Resolution 17-35 by Mr. Marmy, Mr. Cost, Mr. Johnson, Mr. Raff, Mrs. Floyd. A resolution appropriating monies for the current expenses of municipal corporations.
You've heard the second reading of 17-35. What does your wish?
Mr. President?
Mr. Johnson?
Move to adopt.
Motion by Mr. Johnson to adopt 17-35?
Second.
Second by Mr. Frazier. Is there any discussion on 17-35? Seeing none, hon, please call the roll to vote.
Mr. Mangus? Mr. Marmy?
Yes.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
And Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
17-35 passes nine zero. And finally, on the second reading, we have 17-36.
and they should have been paid out previously to these schools. I expedite this to get
Resolution, excuse me, resolution seventeen dash thirty-six by Mr. Cost, Mrs. Floyd,
them their money as quick as possible.
Mr. Johnson, and Mr. Raff. A resolution appropriating monies for the current expenses
Thank you, Mr. Marmy. All of us, please call the roll of vote. Two-day reading rule.
of municipal corporations. Mr. Mangus?
You've heard the second reading of seventeen dash thirty-six. What does your wish?
Mr. Marmy?
Yes.
Mr. Raff?
Mr. President.
Yes.
Mr. Marmy.
Mr. Blake?
Make a motion to adopt resolution seventeen dash thirty-six.
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Motion by Mr. Marmy, second by Mrs. Floyd. Is there any discussion on seventeen dash
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
thirty-six? Seeing none, all of us, please call the roll of vote.
Mr. Fraser?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
And Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Mangus?
Seventeen dash thirty-eight passes nine zero. Next, we move on to first reading,
Mr. Marmy?
seventeen dash thirty-seven.
Yes.
Resolution seventeen dash thirty-seven by Mr. Marmy, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Cost. A resolution Mr. Raff? appropriating monies for the current expenses of municipal corporations.
Yes.
Seventeen dash thirty-seven will be held for two weeks for a second reading. And
Mr. Blake?
finally this evening, we have seventeen dash thirty-eight.
Yes.
Resolution seventeen dash thirty-eight by Mr. Marmy, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Cost. A resolution Mr. Bub? appropriating monies for the current expenses of municipal corporations.
Yes.
Seventeen dash thirty-eight. Mr. Marmy?
Mr. Cost?
I make a motion to waive the two-day reading rule on resolution seventeen dash
Yes.
thirty-eight.
Motion to waive the two-day reading rule by Mr. Marmy, second by Mrs. Floyd. Mr. Marmy?
Thank you, Mr. President. We've had these funds in our possession for quite a while, and they should have been paid out previously to these schools. I expedite this to get them their money as quick as possible.
Thank you, Mr. Marmy. All of us, please call the roll of vote. Two-day reading rule.
Mr. Mangus? Mr. Marmy?
Yes.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Fraser?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
And Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Seventeen dash thirty-eight passes nine zero. Next, we move on to first reading, seventeen dash thirty-seven.
Resolution seventeen dash thirty-seven by Mr. Marmy, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Cost. A resolution appropriating monies for the current expenses of municipal corporations.
Seventeen dash thirty-eight. Mr. Marmy?
I make a motion to waive the two-day reading rule on resolution seventeen dash thirty-eight.
Motion to waive the two-day reading rule by Mr. Marmy, second by Mrs. Floyd. Mr. Marmy?
Thank you, Mr. President. We've had these funds in our possession for quite a while, and they should have been paid out previously to these schools. I expedite this to get them their money as quick as possible.
Thank you, Mr. Marmy. All of us, please call the roll of vote. Two-day reading rule.
Mr. Mangus? Mr. Marmy?
Yes.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Fraser?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
And Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Seventeen dash thirty-eight passes nine zero. Next, we move on to first reading, seventeen dash thirty-seven.
Resolution seventeen dash thirty-six by Mr. Cost, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Johnson, and Mr. Raff. A resolution appropriating monies for the current expenses of municipal corporations.
Seventeen dash thirty-eight. Mr. Marmy?
I make a motion to waive the two-day reading rule on resolution seventeen dash thirty-eight.
Motion to waive the two-day reading rule by Mr. Marmy, second by Mrs. Floyd. Mr. Marmy?
Thank you, Mr. President. I make a motion to adopt resolution seventeen dash thirty-eight.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Marmy, second by Mrs. Floyd. Is there any discussion on seventeen dash thirty-eight? Seeing no additional, all of us, please call the roll of vote.
Mr. Mangus? Mr. Marmy?
Yes.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Fraser?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
And Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Seventeen dash thirty-eight passes nine zero. Next, we move on to first reading, seventeen dash thirty-seven.
Resolution seventeen dash thirty-seven by Mr. Marmy, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Cost. A resolution appropriating monies for the current expenses of municipal corporations.
Seventeen dash thirty-seven will be held for two weeks for a second reading. And finally this evening, we have seventeen dash thirty-eight.
Resolution seventeen dash thirty-eight by Mr. Marmy, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Cost. A resolution appropriating monies for the current expenses of municipal corporations.
Seventeen dash thirty-eight passes nine zero. Next, we move on to first reading, seventeen dash thirty-seven.
Resolution seventeen dash thirty-seven by Mr. Marmy, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Cost. A resolution appropriating monies for the current expenses of municipal corporations.
Seventeen dash thirty-seven will be held for two weeks for a second reading. And finally this evening, we have seventeen dash thirty-eight.
Resolution seventeen dash thirty-eight by Mr. Marmy, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Cost. A resolution appropriating monies for the current expenses of municipal corporations.
Seventeen dash thirty-eight passes nine zero. Next, we move on to first reading, seventeen dash thirty-seven.
Resolution seventeen dash thirty-seven by Mr. Marmy, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Cost. A resolution appropriating monies for the current expenses of municipal corporations.
Seventeen dash thirty-seven will be held for two weeks for a second reading. And finally this evening, we have seventeen dash thirty-eight.
Resolution seventeen dash thirty-eight by Mr. Marmy, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Cost. A resolution appropriating monies for the current expenses of municipal corporations.
Seventeen dash thirty-eight. Mr. Marmy?
I make a motion to waive the two-day reading rule on resolution seventeen dash thirty-eight.
Motion to waive the two-day reading rule by Mr. Marmy, second by Mrs. Floyd. Mr. Marmy?
Thank you, Mr. President. We've had these funds in our possession for quite a while, and they should have been paid out previously to these schools. I expedite this to get them their money as quick as possible.
Thank you, Mr. Marmy. All of us, please call the roll of vote. Two-day reading rule.
Mr. Mangus? Mr. Marmy?
Yes.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Fraser?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
And Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Seventeen dash thirty-eight passes nine zero. Next, we move on to first reading, seventeen dash thirty-seven.
Resolution seventeen dash thirty-six by Mr. Cost, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Johnson, and Mr. Raff. A resolution appropriating monies for the current expenses of municipal corporations.
Seventeen dash thirty-eight. Mr. Marmy?
I make a motion to waive the two-day reading rule on resolution seventeen dash thirty-eight.
Motion to waive the two-day reading rule by Mr. Marmy, second by Mrs. Floyd. Mr. Marmy?
Thank you, Mr. President. We've had these funds in our possession for quite a while, and they should have been paid out previously to these schools. I expedite this to get them their money as quick as possible.
Thank you, Mr. Marmy. All of us, please call the roll of vote. Two-day reading rule.
Mr. Mangus? Mr. Marmy?
Yes.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Fraser?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
And Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Seventeen dash thirty-eight passes nine zero. Next, we move on to first reading, seventeen dash thirty-seven.
Resolution seventeen dash thirty-six by Mr. Cost, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Johnson, and Mr. Raff. A resolution appropriating monies for the current expenses of municipal corporations.
Seventeen dash thirty-eight passes nine zero. Next, we move on to first reading, seventeen dash thirty-seven.
Resolution seventeen dash thirty-seven by Mr. Marmy, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Cost. A resolution appropriating monies for the current expenses of municipal corporations.
Seventeen dash thirty-eight passes nine zero. Next, we move on to first reading, seventeen dash thirty-seven.
Resolution seventeen dash thirty-seven by Mr. Marmy, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Cost. A resolution appropriating monies for the current expenses of municipal corporations.
Seventeen dash thirty-eight passes nine zero. Next, we move on to first reading, seventeen dash thirty-seven.
Resolution seventeen dash thirty-seven by Mr. Marmy, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Cost. A resolution appropriating monies for the current expenses of municipal corporations.
Seventeen dash thirty-seven will be held for two weeks for a second reading. And finally this evening, we have seventeen dash thirty-eight.
Resolution seventeen dash thirty-eight by Mr. Marmy, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Cost. A resolution appropriating monies for the current expenses of municipal corporations.
Seventeen dash thirty-eight passes nine zero. Next, we move on to first reading, seventeen dash thirty-seven.
Resolution seventeen dash thirty-seven by Mr. Marmy, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Cost. A resolution appropriating monies for the current expenses of municipal corporations.
Seventeen dash thirty-seven will be held for two weeks for a second reading. And finally this evening, we have seventeen dash thirty-eight.
Resolution seventeen dash thirty-eight by Mr. Marmy, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Cost. A resolution appropriating monies for the current expenses of municipal corporations.
Seventeen dash thirty-eight passes nine zero. Next, we move on to first reading, seventeen dash thirty-seven.
Resolution seventeen dash thirty-seven by Mr. Marmy, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Cost. A resolution appropriating monies for the current expenses of municipal corporations.
Seventeen dash thirty-eight. Mr. Marmy?
I make a motion to waive the two-day reading rule on resolution seventeen dash thirty-eight.
Motion to waive the two-day reading rule by Mr. Marmy, second by Mrs. Floyd. Mr. Marmy?
Thank you, Mr. President. We've had these funds in our possession for quite a while, and they should have been paid out previously to these schools. I expedite this to get them their money as quick as possible.
Thank you, Mr. Marmy. All of us, please call the roll of vote. Two-day reading rule.
Mr. Mangus? Mr. Marmy?
Yes.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Fraser?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
And Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Seventeen dash thirty-eight passes nine zero. Next, we move on to first reading, seventeen dash thirty-seven.
Resolution seventeen dash thirty-six by Mr. Cost, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Johnson, and Mr. Raff. A resolution appropriating monies for the current expenses of municipal corporations.
Seventeen dash thirty-eight. Mr. Marmy?
I make a motion to waive the two-day reading rule on resolution seventeen dash thirty-eight.
Motion to waive the two-day reading rule by Mr. Marmy, second by Mrs. Floyd. Mr. Marmy?
Thank you, Mr. President. We've had these funds in our possession for quite a while, and they should have been paid out previously to these schools. I expedite this to get them their money as quick as possible.
Thank you, Mr. Marmy. All of us, please call the roll of vote. Two-day reading rule.
Mr. Mangus? Mr. Marmy?
Yes.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Fraser?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
And Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Seventeen dash thirty-eight passes nine zero. Next, we move on to first reading, seventeen dash thirty-seven.
Resolution seventeen dash thirty-six by Mr. Cost, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Johnson, and Mr. Raff. A resolution appropriating monies for the current expenses of municipal corporations.
Seventeen dash thirty-eight passes nine zero. Next, we move on to first reading, seventeen dash thirty-seven.
Resolution seventeen dash thirty-six by Mr. Cost, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Johnson, and Mr. Raff. A resolution appropriating monies for the current expenses of municipal corporations.
Seventeen dash thirty-eight passes nine zero. Next, we move on to first reading, seventeen dash thirty-seven.
Resolution seventeen dash thirty-six by Mr. Cost, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Johnson, and Mr. Raff. A resolution appropriating monies for the current expenses of municipal corporations.
Seventeen dash thirty-eight passes nine zero. Next, we move on to first reading, seventeen dash thirty-seven.
Resolution seventeen dash thirty-six by Mr. Cost, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Johnson, and Mr. Raff. A resolution appropriating monies for the current expenses of municipal corporations.
Seventeen dash thirty-eight passes nine zero. Next, we move on to first reading, seventeen dash thirty-seven.
Resolution seventeen dash thirty-six by Mr. Cost, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Johnson, and Mr. Raff. A resolution appropriating monies for the current expenses of municipal corporations.
Seventeen dash thirty-eight passes nine zero. Next, we move on to first reading, seventeen dash thirty-seven.
Resolution seventeen dash thirty-six by Mr. Cost, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Johnson, and Mr. Raff. A resolution appropriating monies for the current expenses of municipal corporations.
Seventeen dash thirty-eight passes nine zero. Next, we move on to first reading, seventeen dash thirty-seven.
Resolution seventeen dash thirty-six by Mr. Cost, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Johnson, and Mr. Raff. A resolution appropriating monies for the current expenses of municipal corporations.
Seventeen dash thirty-eight passes nine zero. Next, we move on to first reading, seventeen dash thirty-seven.
Resolution seventeen dash thirty-six by Mr. Cost, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Johnson, and Mr. Raff. A resolution appropriating monies for the current expenses of municipal corporations.
Seventeen dash thirty-eight passes nine zero. Next, we move on to first reading, seventeen dash thirty-seven.
Resolution seventeen dash thirty-six by Mr. Cost, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Johnson, and Mr. Raff. A resolution appropriating monies for the current expenses of municipal corporations.
Seventeen dash thirty-eight passes nine zero. Next, we move on to first reading, seventeen dash thirty-seven.
Resolution seventeen dash thirty-six by Mr. Cost, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Johnson, and Mr. Raff. A resolution appropriating monies for the current expenses of municipal corporations.
Seventeen dash thirty-eight passes nine zero. Next, we move on to first reading, seventeen dash thirty-seven.
Resolution seventeen dash thirty-six by Mr. Cost, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Johnson, and Mr. Raff. A resolution appropriating monies for the current expenses of municipal corporations.
Seventeen dash thirty-eight passes nine zero. Next, we move on to first reading, seventeen dash thirty-seven.
Resolution seventeen dash thirty-six by Mr. Cost, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Johnson, and Mr. Raff. A resolution appropriating monies for the current expenses of municipal corporations.
Seventeen dash thirty-eight passes nine zero. Next, we move on to first reading, seventeen dash thirty-seven.
Resolution seventeen dash thirty-six by Mr. Cost, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Johnson, and Mr. Raff. A resolution appropriating monies for the current expenses of municipal corporations.
Seventeen dash thirty-eight passes nine zero. Next, we move on to first reading, seventeen dash thirty-seven.
Resolution seventeen dash thirty-six by Mr. Cost, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Johnson, and Mr. Raff. A resolution appropriating monies for the current expenses of municipal corporations.
Seventeen dash thirty-eight passes nine zero. Next, we move on to first reading, seventeen dash thirty-seven.
Resolution seventeen dash thirty-six by Mr. Cost, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Johnson, and Mr. Raff. A resolution appropriating monies for the current expenses of municipal corporations.
Seventeen dash thirty-eight passes nine zero. Next, we move on to first reading, seventeen dash thirty-seven.
Resolution seventeen dash thirty-six by Mr. Cost, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Johnson, and Mr. Raff. A resolution appropriating monies for the current expenses of municipal corporations.
Seventeen dash thirty-eight passes nine zero. Next, we move on to first reading, seventeen dash thirty-seven.
Resolution seventeen dash thirty-six by Mr. Cost, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Johnson, and